I will call this regular meeting of the Blue Lake City Council to order. It's Tuesday, October 22nd, 2024. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you establish a quorum of the council, please?
Mayor Jones?
Here.
Mayor Proton Scholz? Councilmember Scifani, here. Councilmember Edgar?
Here.
Councilmember Five?
Thank you. Here, thank you.
Okay, four out of the five of us are here this evening. We're going to move to item three, approval of the agenda. Come to the council first. Is anyone who would like to shake anything around? Move anything?
I'd like to take future agenda items and put that before closed session so that the public can participate in future agenda items.
Okay, so below, reports of council and staff. Yeah. Okay, I'll open it up to public. Is anyone here that would like the agenda changed in any way? All right, we'll come back. We need a motion in a second to approve the agenda with that change on the future agenda items.
So moved?
So here.
Motion made by Lisa Scifani, seconded by Christopher Edgar, to move item, to approve the agenda and move item 16 below item 12. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? We have an agenda. We are now on item four, public comment. The public is invited to present petitions, make announcements, or provide other information to the city council that is relevant to the scope of authority of the city of Blue Lake that is not on the agenda at this time. The council may provide up to 15 minutes for this public input session. To assure that each individual presentation is heard, the council may uniformly impose time limitations of three minutes to each individual presentation. The public will be given the opportunity to address items that are on the agenda at the time the council takes up each specific agenda item. Is there anyone here for public comment? Lynn? And Becky? And Lori Ponte on Zoom.
Okay, can you hear me at all? Is it on?
It's not.
Oh, sorry. I was just going to present to the council information that I recently learned, which is that after 50 years of voting in Blue Lake, we feel I will not be able to do that in person because Blue Lake does not have an in-person voting center here in town. So I'm sort of concerned about that, but I can make adjustments. Then I talked to four of my friends, all of whom are very committed voters, definitely will be part of the election. None of them knew that. So I'm concerned that voters in Blue Lake don't know that and they might do something like I've done in the past, which is run to the poll the last minute and find out it's closed and they can't get to the other polls in time. Maybe they don't have a car. Our bus service has recently discontinued. So I'm hoping the city might consider putting a sign up in the bulletin board space that the city has in the post office and maybe doing other other things to inform voters of that fact because I'm concerned there are going to be people who can't vote because they'll, they don't have any warning at all. They've been able to do this for 50 years, like I said. So I just wanted to let the council know and maybe have considered giving some kind of a notice or something like that.
Thank you.
One more thing. One, Sir Vantes, the registrar, he, I wrote, wrote my concern on Mike Wilson's page and he said, "I'm looking for feedback. We made that change and please give me feedback. I might need to get more funding later."
Thank you. Becky, you were next.
Becky Thornton Regozzo. On October 8th, we had a perfect example of how our current council works. Four candidates and at least qualified and at least supported with documentation was chosen by three council members. One chosen because of a personal reason. One council member decided to abstain because she saw what was happening and again, the community members were once again being ignored. The one candidate with 63 signatures with great qualifications and showing he was well informed on the issues within our city and a lot of folks standing up for him, including two other candidates, were completely ignored. Then comes, all right, so as, I'm one of those in the group that has been called misinformed and I brought you here, all my materials are steady. Everything I've looked at. This is the municipal code down to all the rules and regulations for being on this council and I have read every single bit of it. So no, I'm not misinformed. Please, I would really appreciate to stop being called misinformed. But I do want to call out a statement that was said by Adeline Jones on social media that was a little bit concerning to me. She said, "Choose wisely, Blue Lakers. Four of the seven candidates running for office are motivated by anger towards our wonderful city manager, Mandy Major." Believe me, none of us hate Mandy. And they have no ideas or visions for our town. That's completely false and inaccurate. I think that's unfair to the candidates that you're saying that against and I just thought that that was not quite right. That is spreading misinformation. So I had about two years ago started going to these meetings, watching all these videos, reading all this information material and Adeline, watching you up here, I was very disappointed because everything that was brought forward, you never questioned. You just put it through. You didn't, never had a question, not once for anything that was ever presented to you. Not that I have ever seen. So again, spreading false information, things like that, we try to do our best. Okay, so we get a little carried away on social media. I think everybody does. I'm sorry for anything I've said too. I do, I apologize. But things happen. Chris, nothing against you, okay, really. I mean, it's taken us years, months and years to learn all the things that have been going on in this town. And for over five years, things have been happening that you have no idea about. And a lot of these people in this room do because they've been through it, they've seen it, and people I see on Zoom that have also been present for that. So in that being said, I just want to ask the community now to just think about a little bit of a change in our town. I mean, we need that. We really need other people to step up. And I thank each and every one of you for ever being here and being on the board. I thank every one of you for stepping up and coming in and trying. So let's just try to make a change. As for the community group and the one that's always being trashed and bashed and as the admin of that group, I say, "Go ahead and bring it on because I can handle the heat." Thank you.
Thank you. Lori Ponte?
The council meetings, if possible.
Okay, Lori, would you start over, please?
Oh, sorry, can you hear me?
We can now.
Okay, I would like to suggest that the commission, each commission chairperson or someone from that commission present to their report for their, their past meeting that would be read or discussed at council meetings, done by one, by a representative from the commission, whether it's the chair or a person, instead of it being just a report in the city manager's line. I feel like I've been watching some of the meetings, I've attended one, plan to attend more and I think there are bits and pieces that the, the the chair or representative for that, for each commission would add to a city council meeting. So it's just, just a suggestion and it might just give more input. I know everybody's time is valuable and limited, but I might suggest that going forward that the commissions are represented at a city council meeting by one of their members. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on a non-agenda item? Kat Napier?
All right, getting started. Alex, thank you for the letter. And Becky, it's amazing your comment too because I think we're all kind of coming at the same, the same topic in different ways. I debated about talking about this tonight or not, but I see that I'm on track. And especially since it now rises to the level involving a city commissioner, past council members, the city manager, and you, Ms. Adeline, as mayor.
It's Adeline.
Adeline, I'm sorry, I do that a lot and I apologize. Madam Mayor, we've met only twice. Once when I signed your paper, get you qualified to, to run and then the other at the Old Crow's soiree, we chatted for just a few minutes. Any other interaction we have, there hasn't been any interaction because it's only been through public comment. And here's the thing. I like your quote where we need more energy on council. Those are your words. And I know it's so easy if you're running for, for a campaign or you've spoken a lot over the years, people can pick and choose quotes and I think that one is just all around a good quote. Doesn't matter if it's context or not. But please understand as mayor, ma'am, that you have the biggest megaphone of all. How you choose to use it and how you've chosen to use it, I'm sorry to say, has been divisive and untruthful. Your quote, October 8th on Erin McClure's post, "Just to let you know, four of the candidates are against our wonderful city manager." Those are your words, ma'am. August or October 11th, this is Jason Cruz, who I don't ever recall having met or having a conversation with and only after he posted on my line did I remember one conversation that had zero to do with Mandy Major, our city manager. "I see four candidates that are clearly only running because they hate the city manager." Do you see how this starts to, to come from your, your megaphone perhaps? On October 11th, Adeline, on your own post, "Choose wisely, Blue Lake." Four, four of the seven candidates are motivated by anger towards our wonderful city manager. It's astounding. These are vitriolic words. They're inflammatory, they're divisive, and they're inaccurate. This is kind of a, "Never have I ever made those statements." It does not bring joy to Blue Lake. And finally, I am asking you, Mayor Jones, stop with these untruths. Please stop fueling this animosity. Please stop using the city manager to hide behind and to make her a target. Lastly, it is your name on the ballot, Adeline, not Mandy's. Thank you all for your time.
Are there any other public comments this evening? Alex Rica?
Alex Rica, 43-year resident of Blue Lake. As Kat thanked me for the letter, let me say the first sentence is, "This is the most contentious election in our 43 years in Blue Lake." I'm not picking sides in it. I have my opinions and I've stated my opinions. But both sides, or let me say, the side that I have seen, who initiated this and did the fallist deeds, or let's say the fallist rhetoric, were not city officials. I was on, I started responding to Matt Watts's commentary on Blue Lake rants and raves because it was some of the most disgusting political rhetoric I have ever read in my life and I've read some nasty stuff. And I'm skeptical of anyone who would align themselves behind that rhetoric because it was nasty, slanderous, and unfounded. So this is not just the one-sided affair. And I'll leave it there.
Thank you for your comment. Any other public comments? John Sawatsky?
Hello, council. I do appreciate this letter, Alex. Unfortunately, I think the night of the appointment, I went home and, and thought for a moment about what had occurred and, and the qualifications of the other member. And while I did accept the nomination to be given to him, I felt that it was preordained in some ways. I also feel that the current council, in some aspects, have been compromised by being appointed to certain positions within the city government itself. Alex, I do respect your decision, your, your letter here and I hope I haven't lost your admiration in some ways. But I did feel that unfortunately, from what I saw that evening, that a, a group could align together to make a change in this community and I hope that you can respect that. And I hope that everyone else here can respect that. Thank you very much.
We usually only allow one public comment per person.
If you get back up, everybody gets to get back up. Absolutely, everybody.
We're not, we're not doing that.
Yeah, we're at a 15-minute mark as well. And we do have some correspondence that we will read later in the evening. All right, if there's no other public comment, well, I do see someone's hand up. Whitcomb?
I want to change the topic a little bit and go back to last meeting on the 8th where the roundabout sign was discussed and I want to compliment the council on doing good management on putting that sign into the commission, which is a good function of the council when there's a complex issue like that. But there were good comments that came out of the public on that. But it should have been there, they should have been working with the commission to work out that, the problems that they had with the sign at the roundabout when it was tested in situ. So my suggestion is that perhaps there's some miscommunication with the public and understanding that they can go to the commissions, the commissions could even set up an ad hoc meeting with one or two members at the convenience of the public. And that way, the two people that had the experience with graphic design could have contributed at that point and then you would have saved a lot of trouble on both commission and council, you know, as far as the time goes. So I don't know if there's a problem there or not, but public ought to know about the commissions and make sure that if there's an issue they're concerned about, they go to the commission first. That's all I have.
Are there any other public comments? All right, we'll move on then to item five, city of Blue Lake, commission appointments. The city of Blue Lake has received applications for open positions on the planning commission, public safety commission, and the arts and heritage commission. Currently, both commissions have a single vacancy and these vacancies have been advertised for more than 30 days. I guess that would not be both, but it should say all three commissions. Okay, yeah. The English major and me got that. Okay. So typically, what we like to do is we've looked over the qualifications and it's wonderful to have such qualified applicants on these commissions. We would ask that each commission applicant, if they would please come up and and say a few words and we might want to ask them some questions. That's okay with the council?
Before we, before we go into that, maybe we should address, I have a concern that I haven't seen a resignation from Sherri Green from the arts and heritage. Has she resigned? Okay, well then we have a full commission. There are, there are no vacant seats on the arts and heritage commission.
Yahya is applying for an advisory.
Oh, okay. Thank you. And an advisory, I read the municipal code. Does the council appoint advisory members or the commission itself appoints a?
Council.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council before I call the applicants up? Okay, Alexandra Rica? Yes, please. We have to be microphoned. If you would like to make a statement as to why you would like to be on the public safety commission, we would love to hear that.
I was quite concerned when Blue Lake and the sheriff, that the cost of sheriff's service at Blue Lake escalated so rapidly and how the, our community would deal with it. Given my long tenure in Blue Lake, I thought I had some ideas and would like to try to put them to work for our community.
Thank you. Any questions from the council of Alex? All right, thank you, Alex. I think we'll move on then to our next applicant. And this is Matthew Isaac for the planning commission. Is Matthew here tonight? Oh, thank you. Okay, Matthew. Hi, Matthew. We are interviewing each commissioner. If you'd like to say a few words of why you would like to be on the planning commission?
Yeah, I'm a, you know, 20-year Blue Lake resident. I'm raising my family here. I'm not going anywhere anytime soon and you know, I would love to be a part of, you know, helping this city grow. So that's really it.
Are there any questions from the council for Matthew?
I have a question, Matthew. Have you been to any council meetings in the past or any planning commission meetings?
You know, I've been to a couple council meetings. It's been a long time since I've been to a planning council's meeting, so commission's meeting. I've been raising some, I've been raising kids for the past 14 years, so I have not really been, you know, having the time for it, but that's changed, so.
Do you feel like you're going to be able to make the time to attend the meetings going forward?
I do. I would do it if I, I wouldn't do it if I didn't think I could.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. And then we'll move on to the final applicant, which is?
Yahya?
Yeah.
Yahya?
Yahya? Padia, is Yahya here this evening? Is she on Zoom? No. Okay. All right. So we have three openings, three applicants. What's the pleasure of the council this evening?
I make a motion to appoint said applicants.
Motion in a second. Before we have the vote, we'll open it up to public. Is there any public comment on these applicants? John Sawatsky?
Thank you. I would just like to acknowledge that Alex Rica has been a major contributor to this community and continues to do so far, you know, far beyond what he ever needed to do. And I just want to thank him for everything he's done for us as a community.
Is there any other public comment about this vote? Don't see anyone on Zoom, so we'll come back to the vote here. Christopher Edgar made the motion. Chris Fire seconded. Any further discussion from council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Congratulations to our new commissioners and of course, always a big, big thank you.
As a side note, I did notice that our municipal code for the arts and heritage commission needs to be updated to change the number of commissioners. And so I'd like to make sure we get that on our next agenda to take a look at that and see what sort of changes we might need to make other than the, the number of commissioners.
Thank you. I do too, Alex. Thank you very much. All right, we're going to move on then to the audit. I believe the auditor is going to be here on Zoom, is that correct? Okay. All right, so Brett Jones is a representative of our auditing company and he'll be available via Zoom to present the city's draft fiscal year 2022, 2023 audit. Mr. Jones, no relation, will be available to answer any questions and the audit will be brought back at the November council meeting for final adoption. Although the audit has been completed for several months, the city accountant has not completed the final review and is in the process of preparing the M D and A report. So we have the draft of our audit. And our auditor seems to be here. Welcome to our meeting.
Thank you. Everybody hear me all right?
Yes, we can hear you perfectly. Thank you.
Great, thank you. As you mentioned, we're presenting a draft audit until the city's accountant can finish his review. Once it's finalized, we will be issuing unmodified opinion, which is the highest opinion that we can give. You can find it on the first page of the financial statements where it states, "In our opinion, the accompanying financial statements present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities, business-type activities, each major fund and the aggregate remaining fund information of the city." "As part of the audit, our responsibilities are to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements are free from material misstatement, whether due to fraud or error. And reasonable assurance is a high-level assurance, but it's not an absolute assurance. While performing audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, we exercise professional judgment and maintain professional skepticism." That is to say, we are independent of the city. We don't perform any management functions or make any management decisions. Additionally, we identify the risk of misstatement in the financial statements and design procedures to address those risks. Our procedures typically consist of tests of transactions and balances within the, the financial records. Additionally, we obtain an understanding of the internal controls relevant to the audit and report on any findings we have. We evaluate the appropriateness of accounting policies and procedures and conclude if there are any conditions or events that would raise substantial doubt about the city's ability to continue as a going concern. So in addition to the financial statements, we also issue a communications letter to the city council. This letter would have, has additional information regarding the audit. Highlights management's responsibilities, any misstatements there may have been and any findings that, that we may have. So at the time, we do have one reportable finding that is actually a continuous, continuance of last year and that relates to the timeliness of the report. The California state code, government code requires the city's financial audit to be filed within 12 months after the end of the fiscal year and we're currently past that deadline. So our recommendation would just be to finish the audit as soon as possible and implement some procedures to, to have it, to file timely next year. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Is there a penalty for being late on our audit?
Not at the moment. If there is, that you'll get a communications from the state, the state comptroller's office usually, they'll usually send a letter asking about the status of the report. But as far as I'm aware, there hasn't been any such communications.
When we finalize this at the next meeting, would that then trigger the state to be aware of our, our tardiness?
I'm not aware of, if it would or not. Typically, the state, I've seen states, the state getting involved when it's two or three years behind. At this point, I think if we file it, you know, within the next month, I wouldn't, I have a doubt there'd be any communications from the state comptroller's office.
Thank you. Any other questions from council about our audit?
Yeah, so I did notice that there was a reference to a report that was not found in the, in our packet. And so I reached out to the auditor and asked about that, that item. And I was sent a six-page document, which is the communication to the council. And so I would hope that we might be able to get that in the packet for next month, make sure that the council and the public have opportunity to review that document as well as the 87 pages of audit. As that is, is a really easy-to-digest type of a, type of a document that, that I appreciate as going through 87 pages of numbers and explanation gets a little, a little cumbersome. So I have that document here if you'd like to pass that along. And I appreciate Brett's help with that. And I suppose if we dive in and find any more questions, we can reach you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. This is not an action item. We're just reviewing the draft audit materials. Did staff want to weigh in on anything particular having to do with the audit?
Um, no, I, I mean, obviously, it's a concern to staff that, that we haven't finished the MDA report and the final review. That's a function of our city accountant. And we've been struggling a little bit. I know I've made council aware of some of the issues associated with some health concerns and some, some external struggles that our accountant has been experiencing that has put some additional burdens on our financial work. And so I do apologize. The Brett and his team completed the audit several months ago, and we have just not had the staff capacity to, to make the review timely like he stated. So that's something that is clearly on our radar, and we'll be working to remedy that in the future.
So going forward, to be timely on our next fiscal audit, when should we be doing it, you know, for the, this would be the 23-24?
Yeah, and Brett can probably answer that.
Maybe Brett can answer that. So when, when should, when should the 23-24 audit begin?
So we can, we can start as soon as we finish this one.
I think that's a good idea, so we can be in compliance.
Right. Timing-wise, we probably wouldn't actually start the field work until early 2025. And then as long as we get everything we need to do the audit and have timely review, we can get it completed and filed in the spring of 2025.
Thank you. Any other comments? Is there any comment from public on this item? All right. Thank you, Brett, for all your hard work. And this will be on our agenda for our next meeting.
Thank you.
All right, we are now on item seven. And this is the first reading of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Blue Lake adding a section to amend another section. And basically, on September 16th, 2024, the Blue Lake Planning Commission passed a resolution recommending the addition of metal roofing to the city's residential design standards. As metal roofing has become a regular and accepted roofing material, the Planning Commission and staff recommended this action. So we would have a first reading by title only tonight, and then a second reading and adoption at our next regular meeting. Metal roofs are getting very popular. I've noticed them coming up in town, in the town. Any questions or comments before I open it up to the public?
I would just say that I remember about 30 years ago, people having to get a variance to do a metal roof. I'm in full support of this new ordinance because it seems a little silly to have to get a variance to put a metal roof on your house.
Absolutely.
Yeah. I don't think we thought they were going to be that popular, but they are. Open it up to public. Would anyone like to make a comment on metal roofing in Blue Lake? Kat Napier?
Hi, yeah, it's great to see this no longer have to be a variance and just be allowed. We all need to look at hardening our homes, especially with wildfire. We just have a question as far as it talks about being able to use a standing seam metal roofing, but no fasteners allowed. And I know there's another type of metal roofing. It's not the corrugated things that, you know, that you would see on a shed or a barn. It's still for residential purposes. It's still visually appealing. Delta Rib is one of the names for it, and I think they even have some of this at Carl Johnson's. So I'm just asking why the exclusion on metal roofings with fasteners. Thank you.
Well, that probably would have been a good question to ask our Planning Commission.
That did come up at the Planning Commission.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, so the standards were adopted based upon several other jurisdictions' standards. The Planning Commission did talk about the city planner having the capacity to authorize different types of materials that are similar in nature without having to call out the exact type and spec of every single metal roofing type. Gary does have a little bit of leeway to make those conditions based upon similarity and applicability.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we need a motion to have the first reading of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Blue Lake adding Section 17.24.260 of Title 17 zoning to amend Section 17.24.260 of the Blue Lake Municipal Code adding metal roofing to the design standards.
So moved?
Seconded.
Motion made by Elizabeth, Elizabeth, I'm sorry, Elise Schifani, seconded by Christopher Edgar. Is there any further discussion? Falls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It passes. We're on item eight. And this is our discussion regarding law enforcement services and opportunities to partner with the city of Ferndale and the city of Trinidad. As part of the sheriff contract negotiation, several issues were brought up concerning liability, future cost increases, and current and future service levels. Due to the county's position's change regarding indemnification, the city's risk managers have expressed concern regarding the current contract as well as future contract negotiations. City staff, as well as our partners at CERA, our risk managers, have continued to look for viable options for the city and have begun discussions regarding opportunities to collaborate with the city of Ferndale, the city of Trinidad, and CERA to provide law enforcement services that better meet the needs of our community. Recently, our city manager met with the managers of Ferndale and Trinidad, the chief of police for Ferndale, and our risk manager to tour Ferndale's police department and to begin discussions on options and opportunities. At this time, there seems to be two options that could be simultaneously pursued and vetted. This includes directly contracting with Ferndale for services and the development of a joint powers authority to encompass a wider array of services that could be made available through our relationship with CERA, our risk managers, or our insurance company. At this time, I am recommending that the city authorize staff to pursue the development of both options and to bring back periodic reports on the progress. CERA is committed to providing resources to aid in the development and vetting of reasonable options and solutions. And there's a staff report from Erica Young from CERA. And this has been brought before the sheriff, as I understand, and he understands our situation and is supportive of us looking for other options. If the city staff would like to add anything more, and the council has questions, and after that, we'll open it up for public.
Sure. So we have, ever since we started negotiations with the sheriff for the new contract, we've been pursuing a parallel path of looking at additional options and opportunities for the community. I think we can all honestly say that the level of service that we're receiving is, doesn't really meet the needs of the community. And that's not to say that that's anything against the sheriff department. I think it's just a fact regarding staffing levels and just kind of the, the nature of law enforcement today. We're, we're seeing a real decrease in people coming up through law enforcement, and that's trickling down and, and becoming a problem, especially for contract cities. So city of Trinidad's in much the same position as Blue Lake. We both have the same contract. We are all in the same risk pool with CERA. And so we've been talking a lot about options for the future. We currently have a one-year contract with the sheriff. I anticipate that future negotiations will include substantial price increases. We've been told that already, and I don't see the service level changing. So through the negotiation, our risk managers became really concerned about the indemnification language that was contained in the new contract. This was a change from what we've experienced in the past, and it does present some risks to the city as well as the, the pool in general. And this seems like something that isn't sustainable. And it's also seems like it's a pretty strong position of the county, and I'm not sure that it will change in the future. So E-Ric has been great at, you know, reaching out, looking at options. CERA encompasses a pretty varied group of other cities that they provide insurance to you and consult with and provide guidance to you. And so he has a really wide-ranging capacity to look at what other cities are doing and seeing if there are other models or examples. So E-Ric actually brought this to us to start this discussion, and I think it's a really exciting proposition. I think it's exciting for small communities to be able to work together, pool our resources, and kind of cast a wider net to provide services to our community. So I did meet with the chief of Arndale's Police Department and met with Jay, their city manager, along with Eli, the city manager of Trinidad. And then we had a, a subsequent discussion where E-Ric was also part of that discussion to just kind of talk about options. And I think this is something that we really need to take advantage of and, and move forward discussions and looking at options and looking at what our resources could be. Because the, the one-year mark for our next go-around for contract negotiations will be here, you know, sooner than we think. So E-Ric is also available on via Zoom to answer any questions if people have questions about the indemnification language, kind of what that risk looks like. But I'm really excited. It seems like it could be a really good fit, and it could be something that really helps all three cities and possibly other cities in the future if we were to look at a JPA option. You know, as small cities, it's, it's hard for us to be able to attract people to, to, to be able to want to serve as law enforcement, and it's harder for us to, to be able to afford those services as well. But if we can pool our resources, it gives us a much better position to, to be more responsive to the community.
So our contract with the sheriff right now is a fiscal year, and it'll end on June 30th. Is that correct? Okay. And I guess one of the questions I have is because we'd be contracting with Ferndale, the distance between Blue Lake and Ferndale is pretty far. And what kind of issues, and how, how are we going to mitigate those?
Sure. So just in, you know, kind of speaking in hypotheticals.
Right, right.
You know, we're just kind of throwing around ideas. The concept that Chief Sly was, was proposing would be the addition of three deputies. They would be managed by Ferndale, but they'd be detailed to Blue Lake and to Trinidad. So that would actually give us something more similar to having a resident deputy, but with also the ability to pool from Ferndale's existing staff in the event someone's on vacation or they want to change up patrol routes. But essentially, we would be hiring between Trinidad and Blue Lake three additional positions. We would also have to provide our own vehicles and radios, but there are some resources available for that. There's some grant funding available for that. And, you know, he's, you know, kind of starting to formulate some budget numbers. But in looking at the capacity of Ferndale to be able to kind of expand their scope and service to encompass Blue Lake and Trinidad, it's also, Chief Sly mentioned that it would be a recruitment tool for them as well, so that as they're bringing in maybe younger deputies, maybe, you know, just patrolling in one small town isn't as exciting. But maybe if you're, you know, kind of spreading it around, you're being able to patrol different areas, working with different communities, could be something that's more of a recruitment tool. Ferndale's also very community-oriented in their policing structure, so they do a lot of walking. They, they participate with their CERT team. They ride bikes. They, their deputies are all, not all, but several of their deputies are also members of their volunteer fire department. So it's very much a community-oriented policing structure, which I think would fit really well with what I see our community needs. You know, having someone who's vested in the community, who knows the community, who's here, is, I think, something that would be very worthwhile to pursue and to invest our resources into.
I'm very excited about this idea. I see a few hurdles that need to be overcome. One other thought I had was, do we have the space in our city hall infrastructure to provide for a deputy or two or three?
Yeah, we would, we would be able to come up with the space. And when we had the sheriff here, they had dedicated space. We've kind of cannibalized that space a little bit with our current staffing structure, but we definitely can make some adjustments and change things around. You know, they would be, it would be more of a patrol structure. You know, the idea is that they're out on the street, they're out in the community. And so really, the, the, the space is more of a check-in space, maybe coming back and doing reports. But the ultimate goal is to keep them out on the streets. But we would definitely be able to accommodate space.
Has there been discussion about anyone at the school or that the school could be involved in town as far as having? It was nice to have Elias on with the school, and I know we really don't have that anymore.
We did talk about kind of the school resource officer model. They are very involved with their local school. So that's something that we did talk about, just being able to make that connection to the school. You know, making the connection to, you know, the events that we have in the community, our business community, being able to work with our businesses to talk about their issues, what their concerns are, and just, you know, being able to have more control over these patrol schedules. Right now, we have no patrol. We don't get to direct patrol schedules. You know, so it's, this would be actually, you know, creating more of a Blue Lake-centric law enforcement program that's just managed by Ferndale as overarching entity. But I think we have very similar community structure. Our size is very similar. I think the needs of our community are very similar. Even when you look at our call volume, it's very similar. The numbers, you know, don't change too much between the cities. So I think, you know, and Trinidad's kind of the same way. So we, we really, I think, mesh well together.
Would they have some kind of a logo that would encompass all three entities? Or, because I know people are familiar with seeing on the sides of police cars some kind of a logo that would indicate, is it just Blue Lakes or that we're in some sort of triplex with the other?
Yeah, that was actually brought up as well. And, and E-Ric might be able to kind of talk towards the, the formation of the JPA versus the, the straight contracting option. But we did talk about what this could be called. And, you know, I think there are some thoughts about, you know, future involvement, maybe of other entities and what that structure might look like. But we did talk about, you know, the, the logo, the name, and how it would be reflective of all of our communities.
All right, that sounds good. I'm very excited. Yeah.
Ask if people, how do you say it?
E-Ric. E-Ric.
Um, would you like to chime in and what more you can share?
Sure. And I'll just go home, so they might bark in the background. Um, no, thank you for, for allowing me to participate in, in tonight's meeting. Um, and so, the discussions have been, as, as we first started this. Um, again, it started with really with the indemnification language and then uh, reached out to uh, the City Manager uh, at Ferndale and just started having the initial discussions of, of how we can kind of solve the indemnity or liability issue that opposed. And then from there, actually, um, Arcata, when we talked to them, they actually had talked about forming a law enforcement JPA many, many years ago. Um, and never really took off. And so, that's actually kind of where some of this actually came from, uh, was looking at it from that standpoint. Um, and then from the discussions, as far as moving forward, it takes a little bit of time, obviously, to form a JPA. We did some initial research and found that there is another law enforcement JPA uh, in the Bay Area. Uh, Larcher, I'm trying to think of that. There's three cities that are part of that. And they've been around since 2012. Um, and so, they've done a lot of the heavy lifting from a JPA agreement and what some of those requirements might look like. Um, and then from that, the discussions about police vehicles, uniforms, those type of things, what Mandy already mentioned. Um, as far as some of the costs that will be part of that, but then also just the identity. Um, and the name that was proposed at this point was Humboldt Metropolitan Police or something like that. Um, but the idea, they're, they're trying to uh, come up with, with some, some ideas there. But I think it also, the idea that under a JPA, there would be, that would be the identity. Ferndale would, um, at least conceptually, again, at this point, uh, the police chief would be the um, main body. And if a JPA was formed, uh, then just like you have appointments to your various other uh, associations, they would also participate, uh, an elected most likely council as well as city manager. Or whatever that format would essentially be the governing body uh, for the Joint Powers Authority uh, and giving direction as far as staffing and, and actually adding other potential members. Um, uh, Cal Poly Humboldt has also been, uh, they have dispatch. They're actually interested as a potential as well. Um, and actually, there was some more discussions, more from the dispatch side of the house uh, that even the City of Eureka may be interested if that was something to be part of the JPA. Um, so there is definitely kind of some momentum building. Uh, but this is actually the first presentation we've done, um, or at least the first city council I know that it's been brought to. And, but I do expect that Trinidad will be having a similar meeting and, and then Ferndale uh, has had a meeting with their mayors. And at this point, they're very, they're very open as well. Um, but the first step with this would be some type of MOU, uh, memorandum of understanding of, conceptually, that the, the various bodies are interested in moving forward, um, and getting that commitment. And then we can, uh, Sarah will help in the, any way we can um, with that. The other part I would just add is that I think every, all the cities that are participating at this point share the same legal counsel. Um, uh, Ryan, is that Pavi? Maybe, I get that right? Um, is, I think, the uh, serves as the city attorney for all three. And so, would also be able to help craft any type of legal agreement or JPA agreement as well.
Thank you.
Can I ask for a quick clarification about um, the dispatch? So, university police have their own dispatch program and they would potentially be involved as the dispatchers?
Yes, um, and that's been, and actually, that was one of the reasons. They only have one person in dispatch. They, they are a very small department, but they have their own dispatch. And so, they would actually uh, invite the ability to expand, to provide service um, for the other members at this point. Um, the contract services for JPA, for, for dispatch services can be quite expensive and those costs have gone up. And this will be a, a, a means for the, for the Cal Poly Humboldt to participate as well uh, through that means.
How does uh, Ferndale handle dispatch?
Currently, they, they contract with the City of Fortuna for dispatch services.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
That was pretty much it.
Yeah, it's very interesting, very full. Um, this is uh, the action would be to authorize the staff to continue discussion and provide recommendations for council review. So, this will be an ongoing discussion. This is the introduction to this idea. So, I know we have a lot of questions and a lot of details to work out. But I think, moving forward, you know, we should be thinking about options. It's always good to do that. So, um, at this time, I think I will open up to public if there's anyone that would like to um, have any questions or comments about this item.
I had one little something I'd like to add. Um, I think that this is a great um, a great opportunity and a terrific learning experience. And I think that it would be wise for the council to uh, form an ad hoc committee to be part of these talks so that, um, so that the council is um, part of a think tank that um, that goes forward with this, with this project. So, I'd like to hopefully get that going soon. I imagine we, I don't know if we can form an ad hoc tonight since that particular item's not on the agenda.
Yeah.
We can get that back next month.
That's good for a future agenda item. Uh, was there any comment from public? Yes, Alex, our new public safety commissioner.
Blue Lake has a history with um, cooperating with Trinidad back in the first decade of the 21st century. Uh, it was attempted for quite a while. I was on the council during its initial talking. I don't quite remember uh, all the um, avenues of disputation between it. But geography was one of them. Ferndale was 40 minutes away. That's where the officer, officers are on duty. That's 40 minutes from Blue Lake. Trinidad is 25, 20, 25 minutes from Blue Lake and 50 minutes from uh, Ferndale. It makes a difference in police services. Um, so that's something you have to consider here. Uh, I also think anytime you have a public safety or military command structure that is divided, okay? Because Blue Lake's going to want their command. They're not going to want Ferndale controlling Blue Lake. Either it's Trinidad, local control is the best. So, I think these are snags that have to be dealt with in, in this process of showing, sharing police services with jurisdictions beyond the city limits. I mean, it isn't like they're next door. Boom, boom. I mean, there's a drive time involved. So, that's one of the major things. One of the, in talking with my wife, who has a lot of experience with uh, Blue Lake and government, we thought that a local structure based on the, the, what, how fire departments have their funding, which is property tax. So, that's, that's a major problem getting it established right there. But it solves the issue of local control and geography. And if you have a public safety um, community services district with Glendale, Ferndale, Liscombe Hill, you, West End Road to the end of our sphere of influence out there, you start getting a tax base on property tax that could fund a fairly decent level of service here. And that is one reason why I applied to the Public Safety Commission. To see if that was um, a desirable um, solution to our problems. And it would, it would be a longer process than, than the process you're now embarking on. But I think it would give us a more secure, stable uh, public safety environment than you're going to get with it spread around half the county and that distance and other command structures. Okay, it's going to be, you have three councils involved. And as we all know, city councils are political creatures. And you don't really want politics involved in police services. And that's one of the things why, back in the first decade of this century, that it didn't work. There were other, other more serious problems. But institutionally, that was one of the reasons why Ferndale and Blue Lake never had a working police relationship. It was attempted, but it didn't work. So, I say, put, put that out there as points of information for consideration going forward. And I'm, I'm, my first meeting with the Public Safety Commission will be Monday a week. And, you know, if this is, is uh, agendized, I will be bringing that up to see if the Public Safety Commission is interested in pursuing it. So, I, I mentioned that at any point, because you will want to, we'll run into deer rabbit problems.
Any other public comment? Is there a hand up there? Jean?
Hi, this, hi, yeah, um, hi. So, I was uh, curious um, at, at the time that we lost our uh, police force and then working with the um, our insurance carrier after um, after that happened and then going to the Sheriff's Department because we could not have our own police force. Our, our insurance company had stated that we would never have a, our own police force. Um, again, I uh, was wondering about uh, going through and uh, letting uh, in the evaluation of this uh, is to uh, bring that uh, to the forefront. Uh, the, the workers' compensation, the liability coverage and who would be involved uh, in a JPA creation uh, as far as ensuring um, the city. I'd like to see that uh, uppermost, uh, just to settle the minds of the, all of us that have uh, uh, went through the process of losing the uh, the police force that we had and understanding that uh, we lost our credibility as far as a city that could have a police force. I'd like, I'd like to see that within the conversation. And uh, that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other comment on this uh, topic? Eli, Eli, do you have another comment?
Yeah, I was just going to respond. So, Sarah is, is your risk pool, also the risk pool for Ferndale and Trinidad as well as Eureka, Arcata, um, and Fortuna. Um, and as far as providing coverage, it is governed by a board of directors, which includes every city has a vote. We have 56 members and they would be the ones that would ultimately approve um, this, the JPA as well as the city. But currently, Ferndale does have coverage for workers' compensation and general liability for their police force. Um, and so, there is coverage there. And ultimately, the goal would be that if the JPA was formed, that there would be coverage. Sarah would provide that, but ultimately, the JPA can decide to go with, with any uh, insurer that would, you know, or risk pool as well. Um, as far as making, making that decision uh, on there. The other thing, just uh, from the other comments, just if I can, real quick. One of the discussions with Chief Sly also is that he does see this as an avenue, um, potentially. If, if the, the cities want to create their own police force, uh, because it does take time to stand that up, that this could be something that could lead to that down the road. And ultimately, or, or maybe it still becomes part of the JPA. But um, just the resources of having a chief and the vehicles and all those things takes time. And so, that was also sort of the discussions uh, initially with the chief. Um, that there's, it provides a lot more opportunities, um, essentially for the members down the road. Uh, and the immediate problem is solved is the indemnification liability issue. And then those other things will be taken care of as we go through that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Good question. Indemnification. Eli, would you like to answer that for uh, us? Indemnification, what does that mean specifically?
So, basically, in almost any contract year, one party's going to indemnify the other, which basically means to make whole. And usually, the indemnification language includes that the, in this case, the city will indemnify and hold harmless the county for any claims associated with the performance uh, under the contract. So, what basically in the current contract language with the county, and this is what the change was that recently occurred, is that let's say a deputy used excessive force, or at least there's a claim, let me preface that. There's a claim of excessive force. Under that claim, even though the city was not involved, did not train the officer, had no operational oversight, um, that the county would tender the claim to the City of Blue Lake to pay for the claim and defend it. So, that would mean going to court, paying attorney's fees, and ultimately, if there was a payout, um, because the, it was found that there was that or a settlement, uh, the county of, or excuse me, the City of Blue Lake would be responsible for the payment of the, the liability of the claim. Now, Blue Lake has a self-insured retention of $5,000 or a deductible, another way to phrase that. And so, Blue Lake's obligation or liability would be 5,000. And this is where Sarah was concerned, is that ultimately, the payment above 5,000 is the responsibility of the other 55 Sira members. So, that, those members include Eureka, Fortuna, Fort Bragg, Avalon, uh, Yucipa. We have places all, all over the state, ultimately are the ones that we want to pro-rata share, would be helping pay for those claims. And so, that's the exposure to Sira and why we're concerned. Is it's not only a concern for, for the city to have to pay for claims in which they should not be responsible, but it's, other cities would be responsible as well.
Thank you. Uh, other public comment? Lori Ponte, you have your hand raised?
Sorry, okay, sorry. So, my question is if, if there was another incident in another jurisdiction, another city that we were part of, um, that, that we would become part of, we would also be responsible for any um, any issues that might come up in another city. Is that correct?
That is correct. That's part of risk sharing. The difference, though, what I would add is that for those that have police operations, um, they typically pay a higher rate. And they're already rated for their exposure. So, we use their loss experience uh, based upon that. And so, that, they're deductible typically. Most other uh, law enforcement, for example, will pay up a 50 to 100,000 dollar deductible. And then the risk is shared. Um, and then also, again, we rate that, that uh, their experience modification factors.
And so, Blue Lake's risk factors would be only $5,000?
At this point, the, the deductible is still $5,000. Uh, this, the city can decide if they want to increase that, but that is our lowest deductible at this point. So, each, any claim that's presented, whether it's a sidewalk trip and fall or any other type of general liability claim, the deductible is $5,000 that the city is responsible for.
Is that a per year or is that per incident?
That's per incident. In each claim, we provide coverage up to $40 million per claim. So, for each and any claim that's presented, the city has coverage per occurrence up to $40 million.
But that's just not Blue Lake. That's all the entities that are involved in this uh, group. So, Blue Lake would be.
We're in an insurance pool, Lori. We're in an insurance pool.
I understand. I'm asking, I'm not asking a question. I'm asking uh, Mr. Young. So, for any incidents in any city, Blue Lake has a $5,000 tag, up, up to $5,000 deductible. So, yeah, I get that we're in a pool, but when you're in a pool, you, you swim with a lot of fishes, right? So, you, yeah, so you just kind of have to, to understand that your risk is not just for Blue Lake. It's for all the other entities that you're part of that pool in. Is that correct?
Right. And that's where the board, where the members, we don't accept all members that want to be part of our pool. We're very selective. Um, and, and we do look at loss history and, and all those type of things. So, ultimately, the board decides who's allowed to be in the pond with everyone.
Right, right. No, but I, but I mean, the, the potential for our responsibilities beyond just your city is there. That's a reality.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, great.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to make that, make that, put that out there. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Um, so you need direction from staff to pursue that? Would you like that in the form of a motion or can we?
Yeah, I mean, you could also just give um, staff a, a directive. Um, but I just wanted to make sure that um, council, you know, was aware of this since we are starting to, is starting to kind of um, you know, pick up some momentum. And um, so I wanted to bring this back to you before it went much further, so. So yeah, I'm just looking for, you know, if the council wants to, us to pursue this and continue to look at options and bring back reports, and, and then ultimately, this could become an action at a future date.
Oh, it's the pleasure of the council. Would you like this in the form of motion, or is it direction to staff?
Direction to staff, sounds fine.
Okay. All right. All right. Direction is clear then, to staff to continue discussions and provide recommendations for council review. And then later, we're going to talk about a possible agenda item of forming an ad hoc committee at the next meeting. Okay, we are now on item nine. Council assignments. And due to Elizabeth McKay stepping down, I was the alternate on quite a few of her primary responsibilities as far as being the liaison. So I've been going to a few meetings, a lot of meetings. And so we are looking at our council assignments for 2024. What we should look at basically is what Elizabeth has on. She's the alternate for the Water Task Force, so we need to choose...
You know what? There is no Water Task Force, so I think we don't need to worry about that.
Oh, all right. Well, then, that's not to be worried about. Then she's the alternate to the Blue Lake Chamber of Commerce. Would you like to do that, Chris? Okay. Okay, so Chris, you'll be the alternate. She was also the primary of the Blue Lake Economic Development Commission, which I've been going to. Does that interest you? Okay, so we'll put you as the primary. And then she was the primary of the League of California Cities. Now, that becomes a problem, for instance, they just had one last week that was in Long Beach. I know. I actually thought about going to it since I'm the alternate, because I have relatives in Long Beach, and I could visit my cousins, but I didn't. However, quite a few cities, we did have people going. It affected our HCOG meeting. But anyway, but then at other times, it's been closer, like we had one just recently in Eureka last month. And then in May, we had one in Riedel, which wasn't far. So, you know, it's doable.
For sure, that's...
Yeah. Sometimes it is. That also, the league also includes Lake Counties, Cloverdale, and what's that other town?
There's different regions, right? So we're, we're in the Redwood region, and so they do have, is it quarterly meetings? Or annual meetings that they have in the Redwood region?
Yeah, it's a, let's see, quarterly. Quarterly is local, and then annually is the big one that, like, happened in Long Beach. Yeah. Anyway, so that is League of California Cities.
Only issues, my vehicle is not really ideal for long distances. It can, it can hit Riedel and stuff, but it'd be really difficult to leave the county. I don't know if I would trust it, to be honest. It's on its last leg.
Well, you're not required to go to any of those meetings. Travel, travel's definitely not required.
And then the last one is the Arts and Heritage Commission, which meets the second Monday at 6:30 PM at Skinner Store.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. Yeah, I've been going to that one, and I'd like to...
I work at Skinner Store, so the opportunity to be here is...
Right. It's not far. Yeah. I mean, the two, the two that I am primary to Humboldt County Association of Governments and the Humboldt Waste Management Authority, those are the ones in Eureka that you have to drive to. All right.
You're just going to take over all of Elizabeth?
Easy peasy. However, we do have to make a motion to make those changes. Had you? Oh. I didn't, thank you.
I'm okay with that. Is that? You'll be the alternate to that?
Yeah, you'd be the alternate, yeah. And then these could all be changed, you know, in a few months, depending on how the election goes.
I would move to have Chris become the primary and alternate for all stated commissions, please.
Second.
Motion made by Elise Gaffoni, seconded by Christopher Edgar, to have Chris Fire be the primary and alternate at the meetings that we have discussed. Is there any further discussion from council? Any discussion from public before we vote? Back to council for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? It passes.
Thanks for the guidance.
Okay, we are on council correspondence, and we received a letter from Alex and Bobby Ricka. Dear Mayor Jones and our fellow Blue Lake citizens, the election of 2024 is the most contentious local election we have experienced in our 43 years in Blue Lake. The contention arises from diametrically opposed perceptions and opinions of the current city manager's job performance. Having experienced the utter lack of community-oriented governments during the 20 years of city manager rule preceding Mandy Mager's hiring, the pro side in the contention witnesses her numerous accomplishments, list attached. Cherish her community orientation and admire her ability to maintain our small-town stability and quality of life, despite the financial hard times that have afflicted Blue Lake since its loss of the power plant, power plant's $120,000 annual rent. The con side arose shortly after Mandy was hired. Two individuals, one a resident of Blue Lake, the other a non-resident, approached City Hall with personal grievances. When City Hall's response failed to meet their expectations, they blamed the city manager and initiated a campaign of opposition to and belittlement of her and city council members who had hired her. Come 2024, this campaign of the aggrieved is now actively seeking the city manager's dismissal. It has the aggrieved resident holding a city council seat that is not on the ballot this year, and it has a slate of three apparent allies of the campaign running for the three city council seats that are up for grabs this year.
For just a minute. In the past, we have not read all council correspondence. I think I'm being named in this letter, which I very much find offensive, because you truly don't know my mind, and you have no right to do that. And I would ask, I would ask our attorney here if it's necessary that we read all these letters. I think in the past, you've told us we don't need to read them.
I will continue. Should all three of just two of these apparent allies of the aggrieved win election, the grudge-holding naysayers would take control of City Hall, dismiss the best city manager in Blue Lake history because of their personal grievances, and terminate the community-oriented governance Blue Lake has enjoyed for the past 10 years. We label these three candidates as apparent allies of the aggrieved because we have received mixed messages from two of them. The first message we received from the two were declarative statements made in discussions with us. Both have professed they would be open-minded and fact-driven as regards the city manager's job performance. However, shortly after thereafter, we discovered these two apparently neutral candidates have caucused with the aggrieved and are members of the aggrieved-sponsored slate in this year's election. The third candidate on the slate has made no vow of neutrality that we know of. Therefore, since taking campaign promises to the bank before the election is a fast track to disappointment, and actions speak louder than words, we suggest that the way Blue Lakers can assure City Hall's community-oriented governance continue is to vote for the incumbents, Mayor Adeline Jones, councilperson Chris Edgar, and the candidate Chris Fire. In hopes of good governance, we are Bobby and Alex Ricka. And then we continue, city manager Mandy Mager's achievements. One, she has revived the mutual support and cooperation between City Hall and the volunteer fire department. Two, she has managed to maintain city operations through COVID, and since the city lost over $100,000 per year when the power plant caused cease paying its annual rent. Three, she has had the former gymkhana upgraded and developed into the revenue-producing Blue Lake Horse Arena. Four, she has had two walking bridges placed over Powers Creek. Five, she has instituted traffic calming measures throughout the town. Six, she has established a relationship with a Humboldt County developer to finance and build housing that will meet the state's housing mandates. Seven, she has had the old water main and its tributary piping to individual homes along Gwinne Avenue replaced, sidewalks widened and repaved, and traffic calming bulbouts installed on the busiest street in town, so children heading to and from school will be safer. Eight, she had the city buy the land and obtained a grant from the state to develop Blue Lake's town square. Nine, after 19 years of city managers from beyond city limits, whose performances range from problematic to incompetent to somewhat competent but without community orientation, Mandy Mager, a native Blue Laker, has brought honest, competent, community-oriented government back to Blue Lake City Hall. These major achievements enhance Blue Lake's quality of life, average out to one for every year of her service to our community, and reveal the disservice the aggrieved are doing when they interfere in our city council election by slandering Ms. Mager's outstanding job performance. Is there any other correspondence? Thank you. Okay, we'll move on then. Okay. Okay. I, I've overruled her aggrieved, her, her comments, and I have read many letters to the fullest extent. In fact, at the last meeting, I read every single letter that came forward, including the petition and every name on the petition, which took much longer than three minutes. So it's my prerogative to read letters when they come to the city council meetings, and I just did. All right, we are now moving on to item 11, consent agenda. We have three items on that. A is the city council meeting minutes.
Do we not have public comment on correspondence? We have public comment on everything else. I think you should open it to public comment.
On correspondence?
Sure. It's an agenda item.
No, it's, yes. No, we don't have correspondence. We don't have public comment on correspondence.
Of course.
All right. We're moving on to consent agenda. A, August 27th, city council minutes meeting. B, September warrants and dispersments. C, California Retired Teachers Week proclamation. Is there anyone that would like to take anything off of the consent calendar?
We don't have Elizabeth to check, to check spelling and whatnot.
Yeah, she was good at that. I looked through the minutes, and I didn't see anything that came up. So I think we can do that. We will want to pull the warrants so that Chris Edgar will recuse himself from those. And then the proclamation for Retired Teachers Week is, of course, near and dear to my heart, being a retired teacher. But what is the council's pleasure? Did you want to remove the minutes?
I have time to look at them before, but I'll just be hopeful that they're accurate.
Chris, did you want anything removed from the council, the consent agenda? So it looks like we can, we'll remove B, 11B, from the consent agenda, so that Chris can go, and we'll vote on A and C. We could read...
You know, it's... It's part of consent, so we don't have to read any of it. We can just pass it as...
Yeah, that's why we added it to the consent, because it's just, yeah. But it is a proclamation of the city council of the city of Blue Lake in recognition of California Retired Teachers Week, November 3rd through the 9th, 2024. Does indicate all of the accomplishments of retired teachers in the area. So we need a motion to pass items 11A and C.
I was so moved.
Second.
Elise Gaffoni moved, seconded by Chris Fire to... Oh, Chris Edgar. I, I didn't know. You guys said it at the same time. Okay, I'm going to go with Fire on this one. Chris Fire, seconded. Is there any discussion, further discussion from council? Is there any discussion from public? John Sowetsky and Lori Ponte?
So California law requires that public agencies make correspondence and related materials available before or during a meeting, depending on when they are received. As long as they're part of correspondence, and as part of the agenda, California laws, public input, ensuring that the community can comment on matters affecting that. Thank you.
Lori Ponte?
Um, yeah, I, I am, I, I guess, just dumbstruck at the attack from Mr. Ricka to...
Okay, we're on items 11A and C, the consent agenda.
Oh, well, I think that, that, well, never mind, ever, never mind. It doesn't matter. Never does.
I'll just speak out of school, since I'm sitting up here, and I guess I get the mic. I think it's pretty darn convenient that you choose to read things that are slandering somebody who's sitting right next to you and a number of people in the audience, but when you don't find it convenient, you don't read them.
We read all of the correspondence. I read, I read all of the correspondence.
You have chosen not to read it at times.
That's not true. I read all of the correspondence that comes through. I do. I read all of the correspondence.
Thank you. Please get back on track.
Yeah, let's, let's do get back on track. Thank you, Chris. So we're at 11A and C. We have a motion by Elise Gaffoni, seconded by Chris Fire. Any further discussion from council? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Uh, like, 11B? Would you please leave the room?
So moved.
Wait a minute.
Do we need to discuss anything?
We could, but I'm, I wanted him to leave first.
Okay.
Okay, he's recusing himself. Let the record show that Chris, Christopher Edgar is recusing himself from item 11B. Okay, did you want to talk about the warrants?
I don't.
Oh. Chris, did you have any questions about the warrants and dispersments? Okay.
I would move that we pass the warrants.
Motion made by Elise Gaffoni, seconded by Chris Fire, to pass the September warrants and dispersments. Any further discussion from council? Anything from public? Back to council for the vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye, sorry.
Thank you. All right, it passes. Let's get Chris back in here, and we are going to do reports of council and staff next. Of course, I have. Oh, thank you. Okay, we are on item 12, reports of council and staff. I'll just go around the table here. Christopher, did you go to any meetings?
No, I didn't, but I will report, I attempted to make contact with Jason Ramos.
How'd that go?
I did not return the phone call.
Okay.
Or the phone call? They meet very infrequently. I, I've been to, let's see, since I've been mayor, well, since I've been on the council this last time, which has been 10 years, eight as mayor, I think I went to one meeting, and it was just me and Arlo Ramos and one other person. I can't even recall, so it wasn't really much of a meeting. But thank you for reaching out. No other meetings?
No meetings for me. We already, I reported off our last meeting.
Special meeting.
How many things?
Okay, as usual, I have a lot to report. Let me do this by the way I've been going here. Okay, so the Humboldt Waste Management Authority meeting was on October 10th, and I have all that information, if anyone's interested in what occurred at that meeting. And I have all that information if anyone's interested in what occurred at that meeting. Um, but um, we're continuing to work on thirteen eighty-three, which is the. Food waste issue that has come up quite a bit. Um, and. Uh, we had our budget uh looked over again, um. Waste management summary of the budget, so it was a pretty routine meeting. Uh, then I attended the Arts and Heritage Commission meeting. Um, and um, this is a good group of artists that I'm very proud of, um, the work that they do. Um, they talked about the art-based traffic calming installation. Um, which is the crosswalks that are going to occur on Greenwood Avenue and. Possible colors and the school being involved in that. They talked about the Fire Hydrant Art Project, another exciting thing we have going on in our town. And that's going to be um starting up quickly. They um discussed the city hall signage. The burl that's out in front of city hall is apparently very old and bending the. Yeah, and it may not even be accurate as far as the number one, two, three, four. Anyway, um, so they have some ideas of some concepts there. Um, and then they made some discussion, they had some discussions about uh sculptures and murals. Um, including the mural that's going to go along the side of the library ramp. That's going up and how they're going to involve the students in that and maybe have something to do. And also Molly Holman from the Resource Center is involved in that, so it may have something to do with reading and with um healthy eating and that kind of thing. So that was that meeting and then at the last um. Meeting that I attended, uh, which was the Humboldt County Association of Governments. We did receive um the resignation of our executive director. And she is now going to RCA, so you're gonna see a lot of her there, interestingly enough. Um, which was too bad because Beth Burks has been a really good um executive director, so we are um. Going to be looking for a replacement for her. Um, we had a Humboldt Bay Trail update, so that's the trail that we're seeing being built along one oh one. And how it's going on around Brainerd with a quite a large bridge there. And so we had Hank Seaman from Humboldt County uh Public Works Department. Give us a PowerPoint of what was going on there. We um approved the city of Arcata's local transportation fund and the master fund transfer. Um, and other than that, um, I think that's all we did for that meeting. Um, that's all I have. Angela not being here, we won't have a report from the Chamber of Commerce. We did that at last meeting. Okay, we're good. Just not having gone into any meetings. And so that leaves us at the city manager report. And we all have a copy of that. Are there any questions from council about the city manager report? Wonder if our council person has left the building or something. Well, it's kind of awkward. Someone, one of our council persons has just left.
Sometimes it happens. We can move on, I think.
Yeah, we can keep going. All right, well, we will keep going. We have our city manager report. Um, the law enforcement, we discussed already. Parks and Recreation, the town square is almost complete. Um, power was hooked up to the site. The splash pad is operational. I saw some kids.
I did too.
Playing in it the other day. That's great. Um, the bike park, jump lines will be paved um the last week of October, so the bike park is moving along. Yeah. Um, under capital improvements, the Greenwood Truck Route project is scheduled for paving the last week of October. Uh, the contractors finishing the final concrete work and planting plans have been submitted. That'll be nice to look at. The Arts and Heritage Commission reviewed and approved the crosswax stri- crosswalk striping. That was what I was discussing earlier at the Arts and Heritage Commission meeting. Um, under property negotiations, the city has entered into an exclusive negotiating agreement for the possible purchase. Or lease of the city corporation yard. That's ongoing and city staff is meeting with representatives from power transitions. To the potential for a battery storage project on the former power plant site. Concerning Powers Creek District, work continues on the Botawak Community Project, including preparing the project for submission. To the Planning Commission, Calgon Carbon, um, city staff has been working with the owners of Calgon Carbon. Um, the owners are working on a demolition plan along with environmental installations to facilitate selling the property. Uh, the FEMA water tank funding, the city submitted a funding request to the FEMA Hazard. Mitigation program to replace the city's two redwood water tanks. These are our planning and engineering projects. Negotiations continue with the McClure Trust regarding the easement for Tank One and the Water Line. Uh, the housing element update, staff has completed the sequoia analysis for the housing element. And it has been circulating for comment. Staff anticipates presenting the document to the Planning Commission at their meeting in October for review and discussion. And lastly, staff is working closely with our HCD. Representatives to address implementation of various initiatives, having a compliant housing element. Allows the city to participate in a range of programs and funding opportunities. Would the manager like to elaborate on anything?
Nope, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Does the council have any questions of the manager concerning her report?
Yes, I do. Um, with the Calgon plant, um, is there already interest in someone buying it? Are they just looking in the the position of selling?
Um, so we've been working with Calgon Carbon for a number of years to demo the plant. And um transition the property over to a new development strategy. There are several developers that have been interested in the, over the years. In the property and there's um one that is um actively um has pursued. Options and ideas um in the event that Calgon would want to uh move that project forward. So right now, the. The activity um that's progressing is really in relationship to demolition. Of the plant and moving forward with a phase one and possible phase two environmental assessment, which would then allow. Development or a sale to proceed. So we've been working closely. We just did a tour of the plant last week. Uh, Mike Foget and then Dan Dimick, our building official, all toured the plant and we had some really good conversations with. The Calgon representatives. Um, it's really high on their list to to remediate the site and get it cleaned up and take away the nuisance. Issues um that are, you know, continuing to kind of plague everyone um with vandalism and different issues, so.
Is that an LLC that owns that company like, like what the power plant is owned by?
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure what their ownership structure is. Calgon was bought out by a, I believe it's a Japanese firm. And so they're held under a much larger umbrella. Um, this property was kind of sectioned out because it was in escrow at the time. Of their um, their uh purchase of into this other um business structure. So it's kind of an outlier and I'm not really sure what the, what the intricacies of that structure are, but they definitely want to. Get this off their plate. Um, it's not a property that they want to develop, but they just need to be con. They're concerned about environmental issues attached with the site and so we've been pushing really hard to move it forward with the environmental assessments to kind of help. Move that forward.
Um, with the town square, have there been any issues with the splash pad as far as? You know, now that it's operational, people can just start it up on their own. Have there been any problems?
Um, no, we haven't had any problems to date. Um, we um just installed some temporary signage. Um, we had that reviewed by Sarah. Um, and it seems to be working well and. We, it got a lot of use over the weekend for the block party and, you know, just it was a hot weekend and so there were lots of kids and families out there using it. I've seen some dogs running through it and having fun. Um, so it seems like it's a great addition. Seems to be working out well so far.
And the Old Crows are supposed to be building some kind of a privacy trellis, is that correct?
Yeah, so they'll be constructing the shade trellis. Um, North Fork Lumber is donating all the lumber for that project and that's currently um being milled. In partnership, I believe with um some uh engineers at Cal Poly as well. Um, they're using. Some new um like cutting technology to be able to mill that lumber. So the Old Crows are gonna be. Uh, working with George Schmidt Bauer Junior and um the the other reps to to get all the lumber milled. And then get that installed. They were supposed to do it last week, but there was some kind of failure with the software program. Or there was an update that needed or something, so.
So we don't have a timeline on when they're gonna be working on that?
It could be this week, depending on if the lumber gets milled.
I see, okay. Any other questions for the manager on the manager's report? All right. We'll move on to future agenda items. We talked about having an ad hoc committee concerning the um. Direction of looking into police services with Ferndale, Trinidad and Blue Lake. Um, I know that um one of the, my constituents has been asking about the circulation element. And I was hoping Gary Reese would be able to do a really good um. Explanation of it, just like he did with the housing element. I think it would be very valuable. To hear from him. So if that, if the November meeting is not too full, I would like to see that happen. And speaking of the November meeting. It will be um traditionally what we call pres- um Thanksgiving week. It will be two days before Thanksgiving. The twenty-sixth and I'm asking council if that's a problem for anyone.
No.
No one going away or anything.
Well, we're talking about that. Maybe we should look at December. To plan a little bit ahead since it would normally, our meeting would normally be on Christmas Eve. Uh, we could have a meeting a week earlier.
Yeah. We could have one on December seventeenth. Well, typically elections are going to be certified around the twelfth of December. So um, you know, if we had one on like the seventeenth, that would probably work, but we have to make sure there's no other. Use of the facility because that's actually the third Tuesday of the month.
Right.
So I don't know.
We can plan far enough ahead that we can make sure the facility, that the room's available.
Yeah.
That shouldn't be a problem.
The seventeenth. And we could have the swearing in and then the um election certified that night as well. Okay. All right, any other future agenda item? I will have the audit. Oh, exactly, yes. The audit and the final reading, the second reading and the adoption of ordinance uh for metal roofs. Um, and I see a hand from Megan Acevedo. Megan?
Megan Acevedo, I'm from the county planning and building department and I was under the impression, I've been working with Amanda Major. On uh collaboration of the Humboldt Regional Climate Action Plan. And I was under the impression that I would be presenting at this meeting today, but I I don't, I'm not sure what happened. I don't see it on the agenda. And I just wanted to uh bring it up so that it can maybe get on a subsequent meeting. Um.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Megan. We have a agenda setting meeting um that is an ad hoc meeting of two of our. Uh, council members and that didn't come forward, so I'm I'm sorry we didn't.
Can I answer that?
Yeah.
Megan, I apologize. Um, we were going to put it on our planning commission meeting first. Um, I was talking with Gary Reese. Um, he wanted to be able to present um at the planning commission and then have you come to the next um city council meeting. And I apologize, Gary had just gotten back in um from a three-week vacation to France. Um, and we ended up having to cancel our planning commission meeting due to a lack of a quorum. So we do have all of the items. Um, and we're gonna try and do a special meeting, I believe, October twenty-eighth for the planning commission. Where he'll be able to review the cap and then we were hoping to get this on um the November, December meeting for council. And I apologize that we didn't get that coordinated with you.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that we were both on the same, all on the same page, so thank you.
Thanks. Okay, um, any other items to be at our future meeting? We will have our agenda meeting and then we'll with more. All right, um. Moving on, we are now on items thirteen, fourteen and fifteen. We have three closed sessions, conference with real property negotiators, conference with another real property negotiator. And conference with yet again, another real property negotiator. So um. Attorney uh Ryan Plotz is here this evening and in order to go into closed session, we need to have a. A motion, a second, and then public comment and a vote.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session. Second.
Motion made by Elise Gafani, seconded by Chris Fire to go into closed session. Any further discussion from council? Any discussion from public? Lynn Glenn.
So I had a letter to read to council because I didn't see this item until post office a couple of days ago, so I couldn't send letters ahead of time. So, but it's a little bit um emotional tonight about letters, so I just want to paraphrase that.
Wait a minute, is this having to do with going into closed session?
It's having, having to do with the items fourteen, items uh fourteen, fifteen.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Um, so I've lived in Blue Lake since nineteen seventy-five. I've been to many city council meetings over the years because I really care about Blue Lake. And good government's really important to me. Um, I have two comments about closed session items fourteen and fifteen, which is quote the price in terms of payment. Of the city's corporation yard and the main portion of the power plant. That's about ten acres of city-owned land. Um, I encourage the council in general to lease and not sell city property. And one reason is that in the past, the past Blue Lake City Council needing money decided to sell city-owned land to J and S Stakes. J and S went out of business, sold it to B and B Portable Toilets. B and B is a good business. They're owned by really good people, but perhaps it's not very compatible now with um the city's current recreation focus. However, as long as it meets the zoning rules, the city no longer has any say in what business is on that part of the industrial park and that's kind of a result of selling land. Um, and not leasing it if you already own it. So as you all make your decisions, I hope you'll do your due diligence and insist on clear city income projections from a potential lease. And clear city income projections from a potential sale, so you can compare those two and I encourage you to consider leasing. Uh, my second comment is about the negotiation team, man, assistant attorney Ryan Plotz, but no city council member. Early decisions made in negotiations are an important part of the negotiation. And I believe the city council can't do their job to represent the people if they aren't included. Adeline was on a previous council when the subject came up. You probably remember, the council decided they did need to be included on the negotiating team. She was appointed to be the council negotiator and she made a really big difference in the outcome. So I really encourage um the council to insist on being included um on negotiations, particularly they're so important to Blue Lake's future. Um, and I hope that the council will do that with all negotiating teams because I will, I've seen over the years how important the decisions that are made. The consequences can be to the city and they last for generations. So thank you for letting me make these comments. And I'm gonna give you the letters I wrote. Because I didn't want to read them. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion from council? Public, um, Kat Dave here.
Surprisingly, this will be quick. Um, I agree on the concept or the idea to lease rather than sell the opportunity cost of selling. It's gone forever. I mean, it's here, but it's gone forever. And if we lease, we still do at some point maintain. And if we lease, we still do at some point maintain some level of control and influence, I think. So strong consideration with that. Lastly, I'm afraid that I missed item 13 for Ms. McClure. And I don't know you, but I understand why you would fight like you do for your family's land. I wish you luck.
Is there any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, there has been a motion and a second on the floor to go into closed session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're in closed session.